Everything else, that's the last thing that you'll have to accuse yourself of.
Well, we're not really voting.
Come to order, please. Welcome, everybody, here this morning. This is a continuation of our last hearing concerning the beach activities ordinance. It is scheduled to go from nine to twelve. We will shut it off at twelve if we haven't shut it off before then. If you have any devices, electronic devices, please silence them at this time. We ask you to hold your comments amongst yourselves so we can all hear what's going on in the room. As I recall, we were to section number five, section twenty-two dash six-two penalties, fees, and fines. And Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, gentlemen, commissioners, appreciate your time.
Can you hear me? No. How about now? Good.
Good, all right. I'm Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. Appreciate your time this morning to discuss possible revisions to the chapter twenty-two municipal code. As you said, we were made through number four and we're going to start with number, item number five, twenty-two sixty penalty fees and fines. The item was discussed and tabled in favor of sending back to committee and/or decision by BCC. This section was attempting to establish or change the current cost of beach vending permits for specific and delivery permits. Currently, they are five hundred dollars for the initial specific place permit and five hundred dollars for the delivery permit. Any subsequent specific place permit costs fifty dollars. So, discussion in different advisory councils. There was a couple of different options. One of them was no change. The other was a percentage increase of twenty-five percent and then a incremental increase of either up to seven fifty or up to a thousand dollars.
I believe last week we talked about going up on the initial specific place to seven fifty. I think we left that meeting with that in mind. And then I would concur that we make no change to the specific place since we're going up two hundred and fifty dollars. Then for this year, let's not go up on the specific place fees. That's just my ideas.
I agree with that. I think we need to, you know, go up to seven fifty on the initial fee. And at this time, I don't, I don't think we need to go up on the specific part of it, just the extra part of it. Just keep that the same, what it is now.
Well, that's seven fifty initial fee both for the delivery and specific location, correct? Now, what would you, what are you agreeing to? All right. And then leave everything as it is for this.
Okay, and then so any subsequent specific place permit would remain at fifty dollars. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, now, we're talking now just about the permits, not the fines and fees, correct?
Yes, ma'am, this section right here, yeah, five A is just for the cost of beach vending permits.
Okay. All right, any comments from the public? Come forward, state your name and spell your last name for the clerk.
My name is Derek Lund, L-U-N-D. I was just wondering, this increased charge, where's the money actually gonna be spent?
Sent or spent?
Spent.
Spent. Brian?
All permit fees are sent to the general fund of Walton County.
But we are able to add more code enforcement officers, but that money doesn't generate any, does any of it generate from there?
No, ma'am, all of our code enforcement officers are, the funds are generated through bed tax collections. The fees are actually submitted into the general fund for Walton County.
Okay, anyone else? There's nothing. Nothing to show.
So, there's a need for the price increase. There's, is that what I'm understanding, that there, there's a cause to increase it? There's a need for it?
That's my understanding, yes. Anyone else? Moving right along then. Brian, is there anything dealing with any increase in fines or penalties that's to be addressed today?
No, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner Chapman, I guess to address that concern, the fines for any violation of the beach activities ordinance are set by resolution, so you guys can change those at any time. It does not require the same notice that an ordinance change would take. So, we can re-adopt and amend that resolution at any time you wish.
As needed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Commissioner, I would like to take a look at that. I think the only, and this, this organization that's been formed is fine and wonderful thing, but they really, to me, they say they're gonna control their members. How can they, you know? I'm a member of an organization, but they can't do anything to me other than, you know? But I feel like if we, instead of increasing the fines, if we, say, after so many strikes, you lose your permit, I believe that has more effect than raising the cost of the fines. I'd like to take a look at that.
I agree with you, Commissioner, on that one. I've been looking at the vendor violation list for this past season and there are several on here that are, have multiples, and I mean multiples, up to twenty-something to different violations over the course of a three-month period. And evidently, whatever we're having to do at the present time isn't gaining compliance from some vendors, not all vendors, but some. So, maybe it's appropriate to consider coming back at a later date to discuss the fines.
I've spoken to Brian about this also and I would recommend that he go back and work up something first to bring before the TDC committee and, you know, then move back to the board after the, after the TDC recommendation. You know, a lot of these fines or, a lot of these violations are, and I think Brian will agree with me, are small, you know? You know, I'm two feet over the line in the next, next, you know, where I shouldn't be. But there's some that really concern me. And Brian and I have talked about this for you, you people that do bonfires. And I've talked to Sammy about this and the fire department controls those. But this burying bonfires on the beach can't happen. You know, this, this building bonfires too, too close to the, to a turtle nest can't happen. And I know, I know a lot of, a lot of the turtle nest stuff may be an accident, but the federal government will come in and shut us down. They'll, they'll make it where we, we can't have any bonfire. And I actually think bonfires are, are a great thing for tourists. I think they really enjoy those. But we've gotta do it in the right way. And we've got to, we've got to be better on our, our, the charges we have against us, the vendors. We've got to, you've got to police yourself better. And I know, I guarantee you, most of you in this room are, are doing a fine job, if not all of you. But there's some vendors out there that aren't doing a fine job. And y'all have got to recognize them and point them out to us. But we can't continuously have people with twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty violations every summer. So, that's my opinion on it.
And I agree, Commissioner, even though some of them may be small, you know, small things add up after a while. If you're, you know, as I remind people all the time, I'm a girl scout. Whenever you break the law, you break the rules, you break the rules. If you're gonna break a small one, you're eventually going to break the big one. So, I really think if we can get a handle on that, because one apple is gonna ruin it for everybody.
Okay, I think you got direction.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next item, number six, I'm gonna pass the gavel back to the chairwoman. So, here you go.
Thank you. And before we do that, I know I got some comments. I know we spoke to specific issues, but if there's any vendors here that have general issues that you would like to speak to before I take the gavel, come on up real quick.
Excuse me, how about the public wanting to make?
Sure, absolutely, that's what, that's what I opened this back up for, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Of course.
My name's Derek Lund. I've been a resident and a taxpayer in this county for forty-seven years. I moved here in nineteen seventy. But I, we did a public records request. We got, all these are considered complaints from the TDC. And they're boiled down to two, two-hundred-and-thirty-one complaints. And they were insinuated that those are the vendor complaints. Well, out of those two-hundred-and-thirty-one complaints, there's eighty-seven were labeled vendors, actually. Fifty-five of the complaints were unfounded, meaning that somebody complained about something and it didn't turn out to be vendor complaint. Out of those fifty-five, there were sixteen vending without a permit. A non-vended, a non-permitted vendor shouldn't be looped in, or grouped in there with a vendor that goes by the rules. And so, that's a non-vendor, that was five of those. There was eleven of those complaints, there was no follow-up whatsoever. So, there was no information at all about that, okay? Three of those, fifty-five, was special event vendors. Well, they can't be grouped as vendors because they don't have to have a vending permit. So, those three shouldn't be grouped in as a vendor. There was thirty-three that was actually, of the fifty-five, that was actually in compliance. But that was still going against the vendors. There was two, there was actually an information request, but that was two more counted against the vendors. One of them was a vendor versus a private citizen and the private citizen said that there was a kayak that should, somewhere where it should have been put. And that was never resolved, but that was a strike against the vendor. So, that was a total of fifty-five that was unfounded. Okay, the remainder is eighteen.
Mr. Lund, you'll take about fifteen seconds to wrap up your comment.
The, the remainder is, that was found, actually founded, was eighteen. And then there was fourteen that was, the outcome was not clear. So, of all the complaints, that was seven-point-seven-nine percent of complaints that was actual vendor violations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lund.
And ma'am, while, while you're coming forth, I, the reason I said vendors, because I had complaints from vendors that they did not get to speak the other day. I didn't get any complaints from public. Did you wanna come?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much. I didn't know, 'cause there was no agenda what we'd be doing or not doing. My name is Georgine Newell, N-E-W-E-L-L. And I am only a public citizen. And my only agenda is that we have a positive beach environment for everyone. I've written you all an email. I wasn't able to attend the meeting on the eighteenth. Unfortunately, I had a vacation planned for over a year. But I did review, first of all, since November, I've been to every beach management advisory meeting. I've been to the TDC meeting where recommendations were formulated. I was at the January tenth meeting where unfortunately, we ran out of time and couldn't have this set. And then I have reviewed the two-hour video. So, and it was quite informative. Since I did include comments on specific items that you folks addressed on the eighteenth, I just wanna say that as a recommendation, lots of suggestions came up about doing a trial this, a trial that. And I would strongly encourage that to happen. This whole process should be more fluid. I agree with you, Commissioner Chapman, that in no way should this wait until January before beach season. So, I would again encourage that you have, even though there may not be, you know, a complete season of statistics, five months should be indicative of where the complaints are and where improvements should be made. So, I would encourage you also to ask to start seeing this by September. And again, being more fluid, if you decide on something and it's not working, what does it really take to have one issue talked about at a BCC meeting and then, and then have the ordinance changed again? Yes, it would mean that you need to, you know, alert all the vendors, but all the registered vendors will have emails. And of course, now we have a potential good association of the vendors and so they can get the word out that things change. But again, this is our greatest asset. This is the thing that makes all of the county have a great tax base. This is the reason why we're spending millions of dollars to come here. We should show this asset more priority than any other thing we're doing. Because if not, and I don't wanna be disparaging here, but we're gonna be just like our neighbors eventually, and we will lose the tourism dollar. The other thing I just wanna say is that I am all for free enterprise, totally believe in it. But by definition, when the free enterprise system interferes with the well-being of the public, then it is the government's responsibility to step in to protect the public.
All right, thank you, Ms. Newell.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on, I guess.
Number six, Brian. Brian, would you like to speak to this?
Okay, item number six. Item six, seven, and eight deal with special event permitting, or special events on the beach. Item six, special event, it's paragraph A, special event policy objective. This item was discussed and tabled in favor of sending back to committee and/or decision by BCC. Item six A, add a paragraph to define that all special events held on the public beach must be conducted by a permitted beach vendor and all required permits for activities for a specific special event must be obtained by the same permitted vendor. Currently, our code actually has verbiage in it that says if you're offering goods or services for a fee, then you have to have a permit. Current practice is wedding planners, special event planners are not required to be a permitted vendor, just by practice, not by any definition or any ruling. And then the other part of that, that section A was that we've noticed a trend that for a special event, you know, you might have to have a special event permit and then a bonfire permit. Sometimes those permits are pulled by different people. And so, there is not one person held accountable for that event on the beach. So, section A here is a request to help us clear that up by first, making any special events, now, they're gonna happen on the beach, they have to be conducted by a permitted vendor. And then second, that if there is any, any and all permits required for that special event are pulled by the same person. When we encounter that evening or the next morning, we then have one person held accountable and that person is a permitted vendor. It also gives us opportunity that if they decide to be non-compliant, you know, over recurring times, then we can exercise twenty-two sixty, paragraph I, which is permit revocation. Once again, that goes back to, I think, the way to make people, you know, abide by the rules is to have an opportunity to stop them from doing business on the beach. The fines, you know, while they're okay, they obviously have not been a complete deterrent to non-compliant behavior.
Madam Chairman, I agree that all, anybody doing business on the beaches of Walton County should have a permit, perhaps the same fee as the, the vendor, seven hundred and fifty dollars to, in order to conduct business on our citizens' beaches. And then to have a permit for each, each wedding or whatever, 'cause I guarantee you, that's gonna be passed on to Papa. You know? So, and I would also, I guess I have to ask you, we say greater than fifty, we're taking these peoples, you know, holding up your hand and saying it's less than fifty people?
Yes, ma'am, that's item B. We ought to extinguish item A before we move on to item B.
So, I really think there should be a vendor fee. That way, we, we have a track of who's using our beaches and what, and, and.
The other thing it does is it requires them to attend our preseason vending meetings and be informed and acknowledge that they are aware of all the codes that regulate the beach.
I would think it would help you with scheduling, too. I mean, we don't want three weddings on the same beach at the same time.
Yes, ma'am.
Brian, are you talking about just with an event with the wedding? What if a, a couple come down here to stay the weekend and they bring their preacher, just the three of them, go down on the beach and, and get married?
There's certain things that trigger a special event permit. One is if it is a wedding at a public beach access, you have to have a special event permit and that is to prevent having more than one wedding at a thing. The other one is the number of people. And the third item is if you plan to do something that is not normally allowed by code. Okay, so, if you're coming down and you wanna have a family reunion and a bonfire, if you have less than fifty people and you don't plan on doing anything else outside of code, you can go get you a bonfire permit and an individual can go get that. So, there's certain triggers that cause a special event permit. And if it's not a wedding, if it's any other type of event that does not have those triggers, you don't have a special event permit, therefore.
But a wedding would have those triggers.
Yes, sir, it would, it would, so.
So, you're saying that a, a couple comes down? And I'm not against necessarily raising the fees or whatever, but I do have a problem with just a single couple or a couple of people come down on the beach and get, get. I'm not saying that they don't need a permit, I'm not saying that.
Yes, sir.
But I'm not sure they need to hire a.
Yes, sir. I understand your, your thinking there.
And maybe there should be a certain trigger, so say, the bride, her groom, the preacher, and the two parents. I mean, you know, that's a private, nobody's making money off of that.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
You know, so that would be different than, I just hired me a wedding planner or a reception, you know, or whatever.
And I understand what you're talking about, because if we have a vendor involved, they're responsible for everything. And I can see people coming down here, you know, getting married, leaving the beach a mess and all that. But I'm just talking about a very, very small affair.
Yes, sir, there should be probably some provision for that type of wedding or that type of event. Trying to figure out how we would delineate that or distinguish that within this type of verbiage.
There wouldn't be a vendor involved. There wouldn't be a vendor involved, although, let me play devil's advocate here. Let's say, you know, my daughter and I'll go down and we dig this huge hole and put a hole in it or something and we leave the hole. Somehow, we should know, you know, that's who did that. And, and so maybe if they pick up the marriage license.
Yes, ma'am, perhaps the easiest way is, you know, since one of the triggers is if it is a wedding, maybe if we say wedding greater than ten people. Okay, so that way you would exclude the small private ceremony that may happen. And be honest with you, those, you know, can happen, they happen very quickly. They're not usually affected by another wedding there or any other event there.
And that could be informal, you could use that synonym or.
Right, we could change the trigger point to if it's a wedding, less than ten people.
Although, it does say less than ten attendees, a hundred dollars.
Once again, that's in section B.
I'm just jumping ahead here, okay? But, you know, I mean, even to pay a nominal fee to let us know somebody was using the beach. It was twenty-five dollars when they got the marriage license.
Yes, ma'am, right now, we're aware that some people that do these small weddings like this, you know, the officiant and, you know, bride and groom and immediate family. We know there's some people that don't get a permit. And so, like I say, I think, you know, a, the easiest way is just to say a less than number of attendees do not require a special event permit. Now, the question will come up, well, Brian, how do you enforce that on the beach? You know, we roll up on it, we assess, you know, quickly. And if they have, you know, twenty-five people and say we make the trigger point, ten people, you know, we'll, you know, once again, we have to issue them a notice to cure, so to speak, for our statute requires we issue a notice. And so, they would get into our system as a written warning. If they, we encounter them again, it would be a citation, so.
One more throw out there, should we put, as long as the wedding doesn't involve a wedding planner or vendor?
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm just kinda, we're just kinda batting this around right now. I, I don't have a problem with them and I know not all of them will, but, you know, we advertise on the website, you know, if you're under ten people, it's a hundred dollars. That way, the TDC knows that there's a wedding going on down there. And if there is a problem, we know who's responsible for it.
In the grand scheme of things, a hundred dollars, Papa's paying out ain't that much.
Exactly.
I got paid for two weddings, I know.
Okay, any, any comments from the audience on this? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Lady lecture, L-E-T-C-H-Y-R. Just one question, on something like that, like if you have an event, they can designate their area. Since they're not going to be, then they wouldn't be designated a certain area down there where daytime people are coming and they're not, someone walked down and said, oh, no, we have this part where normally you do, if you're having an event and you get a permit for a certain amount of people, I think they can specify where they want. So, in this incident, would it be where they're just coming down and whatever's available? Maybe, you know, if there's a vendor down there, they've got their section, but they just walk down there for like a fifteen, twenty-minute ceremony? Is that how that's gonna be, or?
Brian?
Yes.
Special permit, special event permit applications clearly say, or dictate that the permit does not give them exclusive right of any portion of the beach. So, any special event permit, regardless of size, they have to go in and accommodate what is available down there. And they cannot ask people to move or anything like that. So, it does not give them exclusive use of any portion of that public beach.
But the informal people can just go down?
If, if the code is changed or the practice has changed of special event permit applications and we decide to do, change the trigger point for beach weddings of less than a certain amount of people, once again, those people usually don't have an issue with, I want this section of the beach.
Right, they just find a free space.
They go down, sunset, quick wedding, and back off the beach.
Okay, thank you.
'Cause I think there had been a problem last year, inlet beach wasn't there where?
There have some bench problems in the past where people that received a special event permit, permit felt that they were given exclusive. event permit felt that they were given exclusive right of the beach and asked people to move.
Maybe that needs to be in really bold, clear type on the permit.
It is. Clear says it on there.
Really bold.
Now, once again, going back to special event planners, wedding planners being a permitted vendor, they would sign a form that says they acknowledge all conditions of chapter 22.
So, have we agreed on $100 for 10 or less? And that all vendors have...
We're going to charge $100. We're sure going to have to get that word out, because people are going to come down and just assume that they can go down there with no fee, and so...
And we need to work with the clerk's office who issues marriage licenses.
Right. Yeah, we're going to get to the fees next. So, let's hear this gentleman, and then we'll get to the fees.
My name is Rich Jaffe, J-A-F-F-E, and I'm here representing the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. I have a question for you in regards to, I guess, the size of special events. One of the ongoing issues in inlet beach, and I'm sure it is such in other neighborhoods, too, is that when large events, like a large wedding, for example, take place on the beaches, while having looked at the special event requirements, you have to submit a parking plan and that sort of thing, the reality of it is, we have tremendous numbers of people coming down to the neighborhood walk downs frequently, and you have a tremendous number of vehicles, sometimes there are shuttles bringing people in and dropping them off, then you have the setup down on the beach, the whole nine yards. There are some, a lot of vendors involved in such things. Is there any chance that depending on the size of the event, they could be restricted to the public walk downs and public accesses where there is parking available for such things? And you could bring in vans, busloads, whatever you want, rather than restricting the access, and also, quite frankly, for safety concerns, when we have illegal parking, not everyone who shows up at a wedding knows where they're supposed to park, knows the regulations, knows the rules, they just show up and park. And for example, on South Wall Street, there isn't any parking. So, it takes up the right of ways, it takes up driveways, it blocks driveways, at which point we have to call the sheriff's office and deal with things like that. But if you had, say, events more than 10 people, something to that effect, could you not have them at the public access walk downs where there is parking available?
Brian, could you address that, please?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to talk about this in section C, six, paragraph, sub-paragraph C, as well as in eight, the application. If you look at C, it says, limited special events at neighborhood beach access is based on space available to accommodate special event permit requests. South Walton Fire District has permitting authority for bonfires, has already taken this on with bonfires. They assess each beach, public beach access, and determine how many bonfires could be successfully handled to that. We would plan to do the same thing. As you know, last year, we petitioned Admin to allow beach operations, beach code enforcement to be the special event permit application processor. And the reason we asked for that is because we are the enforcement regulator, regulation arm of it, and we all so have more intimate knowledge of each beach access. So, paragraph eight says, item A and item B are detailed lists of the items to be used on the beach, and specifically in B, a detailed parking plan. So, a detailed parking plan would include a viable parking plan. In the case of Wall Street, there really is no viable parking plan. It's the end of a road. There is no formal public parking there. So, if we were to receive a special event permit application for that location, and they could not submit a viable parking plan, that permit would be denied. And so, we have to understand at some point that while the code, as it's written now, was written for small intimate weddings, we have now changed, that idea of a wedding has changed into a large event, and the venue simply doesn't accommodate, because there is no parking, there's not enough room. Some of our neighborhood beach accesses, Raise Multi Mountain, for instance, happens to be a very popular wedding venue. It's 10 feet wide, and it's got private property on each side of it, and there is no parking at the end of Dothan Street. So, like I say, we're addressing those in these later areas.
Let's stay up there, and let's go ahead and do the B, 6B. Did you, have you already spoken on this issue?
Yeah.
Okay. Come on. Sorry.
As far as this parking thing, there's a lot more parking available than what it appears...
We're going to get to the parking in just a few minutes. We...
Well, it directly ties into what you said.
I know, we kind of got off track. We were talking about who should have a permit, and now we're talking...
Well, the special events people do need to have a permit so we can track those, because a lot of times what happens is, they don't have a permit, they go up there, they get a special event permit, and then they hire a vendor to have a bonfire. Okay? He comes in there, supplies everything he needs to do for the bonfire, and then leaves. Well, then, what, he cleans his mess up, and then, you know, he's gone. Well, then, they end up doing something that brings attention to the area, and then the bonfire person gets blamed for the thing. So, I think, I feel like that the special event permit person needs to pay the same amount that all the other vendors are paying, and they need to get an annual permit, just like the vendors did.
Okay. Thank you. Sidney, do you kind of have, you know about that one? Do you have a consensus?
Yes, ma'am, on 6A.
Okay. All right, now, we're on the fees.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. 6B, change the cost of special event permits to be assessed based on quantity of people in attendance. Much discussion was had at advisory councils on not being a blanket increase for every special event. So, the, what came forward was a graduated. So, greater than 50 attendees will be $1,000. Between 50 and 25 attendees will be $500. Between 25 and 10 will be $250. Less than 10 would be $100. Once again, this graduated schedule was to accommodate smaller special events, or really weddings to be, you know, because like if you have less than 50 people, and you don't plan on doing anything out of the order, out of the code, you don't have to have a special event permit.
I think the fees are reasonable.
To go from 50, though, to 1,000, it's pretty, what are, what are other comments? Let's hear from the audience, and then we'll...
And they said Papa's going to pay for it. I mean, you know, I mean, it's a cost of doing business that can be passed on.
Yeah, we're going to get you.
Lori Reichenbach, R-E-I-C-H-E-M-B-A-C-H. I am pro the fees that the TDC is bringing forward. If you've ever watched from a balcony or a house on your own personal vacation, the people that come in with the tents and the couches and the massive numbers of people, they should be charged $1,000, because that might hurt their pocketbook just a little bit if they don't clean up well when they leave. If we continue, and so I can't agree with the comment, 50 to 1,000 is a big leap. No, what's a big leap is going from 10 people to 50 or more. And they're saying 50 or more, so you could have 100 or 150 people there with multiple couches and tables and boiling pots and all kinds of beautiful catering. There's no reason they shouldn't be charged $1,000.
Do we allow boiling pots, Brian?
No cooking.
No, we don't have boiling pots, so if that's...
Okay, well, I have, right, okay. And at this point, I know that now, and I will, but these low country boils, you do see that. So, I'm just suggesting that $1,000 for a party of 50 or more people is really not too much.
Thank you. Sheri, come on up.
Good morning, everybody. Sheri Peoples, P as in Paul, double E, B as in boy, L-E-S. My son and I own Greaton Beach Catering in Greaton Beach. We are beach vendors. We hold a vendor's license, because we do do bonfires in conjunction with our food services. Got a little statistics for you here, and I'm happy to give all of you a copy of this. Last year, we did 116 events on the beach. And keep in mind, every event we do, because we serve food, we have to get a special event permit. Nine of those were for under 10 people. 51 between 11 and 25, 32 between 26 and 50, 17 between 50 and 100, and seven with 100 and over. All of the 100 and over were done at regional beach accesses where there was plenty of room. We encourage our people to not use neighborhood accesses if it's over 25 people. We even will shuttle them to a regional beach access. Currently, right now, if there are not food or lights involved, you do not have to get a special event permit. If you move forward to this proposed permit structure, many of our non-wedding and our repeat customers who are South Walton vacationers, they're going to be penalized just because they won't service on food, food service on the beach, and I don't think that's right. We're no longer allowed to cook on the beach. We have not cooked on the beach for two seasons. Is that correct, Brian? We carry our food, pack it, carry it, run it, use our church, use our whatever we need to that's within reasonable distance of where we're at. The fee structure outlined in the proposal is high for family events and rehearsal dinners. I mean, it makes it impossible for a family to come here, if you're within those numbers, and go out and enjoy the beach and have food. You know, it's just, you know, if you deliver food, what if the food is delivered? Do they still have to buy a $1,000 permit? That makes zero sense. Weddings, I agree, they're different. If you have a large wedding, I think that we can sell $100 permit fee. I don't think that's a problem. But you can't do that for 30 people. They can't afford that. You've got nine people, we're getting a special event permit for, and, I mean, you're talking about $200, $300. They can't afford to buy that. I mean, it just makes no sense. So, again, and then, you know, that's weddings. I think that that's something we can look at that's different. Now, ceremonies only, even if you have 75 people, you're out there two hours. You're out there, you set up, your people come, the ceremony happens, you break down. All of this happens in a two-hour time period. So, to pay $1,000 for two hours is difficult. And then, keep in mind, they're paying this...
Go ahead and take a few minutes and finish.
They're paying this, that $1,000, then they're going to go back to Monay or to Hibiscus, which we have exclusives on, and we're very proud of that, and we love our beach. But they have to pay a venue fee there as well, too. So, you know, you really just need to look at these things, and, I mean, just make it be fair, right, and just, that's all.
Thank you, Sheri. Any other comments?
And Sheri, I don't, I don't disagree with you, and I certainly respect you and what you do, and you know I have done catering in the past. But the bottom line to me is that we are using public property to host a venue on that, you know, and that has to come into play here. We're using public property.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
And I think that has to be charged for, because we're ultimately responsible for cleaning that beach, keeping it up, and it's not just, hey, that one, it's what we have to do and the TDC has to do as a result of all these events.
I absolutely agree with that, 100%. I just think you need to look at the fee structure, and it needs to be adjusted, you know, going from 25 to 1,000, or from 50 to 1,000 is, you know, just a lot. You got to look at the numbers.
Mr. Tousen wants to say something, then Lisa, I'll invite you up.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know, kind of as an FYI, I do have some prices for some other venues, like Rosemary Beach and Seaside, Topsol. Rosemary charges $2,000 to use their beach as a venue. Seaside charges between four and five, depending on the number of attendees. And Topsol, if I remember correctly, they charge between 1,500 and $2,000. So, just some figures for your reference.
Right. Thank you.
Lisa, did you want to come up?
Lisa Boushy, B-O-U-S-H-Y. I really, Jay just kind of said what I was going to point out. I've had the good fortune of having three of my children decide to get married or upcoming weddings, and we can't find venues anywhere for $1,000 for small weddings that, you know, that are nice, much less beautiful place like our beaches. So, I just wanted to make that relative, but Jay did an even better job, I think. Thank you.
Brian, I noticed that one of the ladies said something about tents. Now, since we've got the new regulations on tents, that would do away with these tents?
Well, special event permit definition is used to be allowed to do things that aren't normally allowed by code. Okay? So, in the special event permit application, they would include that as part of their equipment list, and we would make an assessment based on the size of the venue or the area to be used, and the number of tents and all that.
And the same thing with couches?
Couches...
You know, somewhere along the way, we have to decide that some things just aren't appropriate for the beach.
I mean, really...
You know, as much as it looks comfortable and all that...
What do you want to take down there next, rugs? I mean, you know...
Commissioner Commander has a valid point. It's a public beach, and its primary use is beach-related recreation. And so, somewhere along the way, we do have to make a decision, you know...
I think we need to spell it out when they get the permit. This is allowed, and this is discouraged.
That's one of the things that we're going to do as the processing of applications moves over to my department. Currently, I'm held up because I have to renovate my building over there to accommodate more people and a public office to accept applications. But is, you know, a further review and a assessment of what is being asked. And then, we're going to include a fact sheet of things that we don't allow. I mean, we had a wedding last year that had a stove on the beach.
Oh, no.
Had a stove. They had been converted to use LP gas, and when asked, it said, well, we're cooking bread. I mean, do we really need to cook bread on the beach? No.
And what I hear, too, is two different categories. We have a category we're talking about for weddings, and then we have a category we're talking about for just, I guess, shrimp boils or whatever Sheri takes down.
Yes, ma'am, we have...
So, there's two different categories.
Right. Special events, you know, aren't just one type of event. They're not just weddings. There they are, you know, family reunions, corporate parties, buddies getting together, and stuff like that. You know, like I say, there are a couple of triggers that cause a special event permit to be needed. One of those is a wedding, and its purpose is so you don't have more than one wedding at a time at any particular beach access. The other one is number of people, and then if you want to do something not normally allowed by code.
But you're saying weddings trigger, and then the other, but then you go back to, what if you're having your wedding, and me and my buddies want to have a hit together, I mean, at the same place? I think everything should have a, should have a, anybody going down there to do something should have a permit so TDC knows what's going on on the beach. How can we check on things and regulate things if we don't know what's going on?
Yes, ma'am. Later on in section seven, we have asked for a change of one of the triggers of number of people to be reduced to 30. But in other places, we have, you know, permit applications based on the ability of that access to accommodate that size of party.
But are y'all prepared, or can you bring back to us, maybe at our next meeting, a list of things that we don't think are appropriate? When I think of a beach wedding, I think of people, bride in a, you know, a flowy short dress, no shoes on, the groom no shoes on, maybe a lay around their neck, you know, and kind of retro 70s. I don't see huge tents and couches, and, I mean, my Lord, if you want a couch, go to a building, you know? I mean, do we have any, you know, narrow down criteria of what you should...
Yes, ma'am. I'll be glad to put together that list.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sorry, couches to me are utterly unacceptable.
That's what we feel is appropriate for a wedding.
Make stoves, number one.
Yeah, stoves, number one.
And Commissioner Commander, I guess to address your concern, so when the TDC takes over the permitting process, a lot of that stuff could be dealt with on the permitting side rather than assamending the code. So, it could be completely reasonable for TDC to come up with a list of prohibited items or items that would be discouraged.
And not only stoves, but no, these gas cylinder thingies, like gas grills, I mean...
We're not supposed to cook on the beach.
No, period.
Correct.
Okay, back to the fees.
I think they're appropriate. I'm sorry. I do believe that what they have listed is appropriate.
I do for weddings, but I see Sheri's point in special, in things that are not weddings. I mean, like, and I don't know exactly what, because I don't get to go to the beach that much, but like, what do you have, shrimp boil, Sheri?
Yes, we have, we'll do shrimp boil.
Come up, come up. Sorry.
Again, like I said, like I said, we, because we serve food on the beach, and it's a service, whether we have two people or five, or 10, or 100, we have to get a special event permit. And really, since we can't cook on the beach anymore, that kind of makes sense when we can cook on the beach. But now that we can't cook on the beach, maybe we don't even have to have one for the food part, and only if we're doing lights and doing whatever else we do. I don't know.
Code says, you know, serving food or beverage on the beach.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, so I, I just, I, I don't know how, you, you just have to look at that because it's, it's difficult. Because you've got a family, you know, year, we've had people, we've done shrimp boils for, for the last ten years, and they come year after year after year. And these are people that we bring in, so if there's some...
What, what size is that usually?
Uh, the, the average, this average is out to be thirty-one people across the board, our numbers. It's an average of thirty-one.
So thirty-one people would be paid...
Per event, because that's an average, you know?
Five hundred dollars for, to do that.
Yeah, and if you're only spending, you know, fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars on food to throw five hundred at them, that's hard. That's difficult for a family event. Now, if it's a wedding, it's a whole different thing. I understand. You know, weddings are, are unique, they're different, and, uh, this is the kind of layout that we do. We do not put couches on the beach, and we don't set up stoves. We do not use glass. We have turtle-friendly acrylic lights. We've spent thousands and thousands of dollars to operate our business so that we could work on the beach. And we've done that out of respect for the beach, out of respect for the turtles, out of respect for the neighbors, and all the other beachgoers, as well as our clients.
Sheri, do you not, you, let me ask you, you, you feel that these other events don't cause as much, I don't know what word I want to use, havoc, or as much problem as weddings do?
Well, I, I think that, that they're, no, they don't, I don't feel like they cause as much havoc. I do think that a sliding scale would be fine, but you have to get the numbers, you kind of have to get the, you, we just have to look at it now, you know, and go back and pull reports, we can do all that, and I'm happy to, you, whatever y'all want, because we have it. And, um, try to figure out what those numbers would be. But to go from, you know, the fifty, the under fifty, or what do we have, Brian, where's that thousand dollars?
The cart fee's fifty.
Twenty-five to fifty is five hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm. That's still kind of high for twenty-five to fifty, because you've got to base it on what, what actually are they spending, you know, to make that work for a family. If it's wedding-related, I think that it's absolutely, can be done. If it's just a family coming down to call us up and say, "Hey, can y'all come out here and bring us some shrimp, and let's have a boil, and put up a few lights," and, you know, whatever, it, it's just makes it difficult for the, um, for the client. So, I don't know where this is...
So maybe we could have just a set fee for those special events, and then weddings, it sounds like a consensus on the wedding fees, and then...
Yeah, and, and too, a lot of that, once you designate how many people are going to, that, that each beach can hold, once you designate the fact that the vendor, we pull all of our permits, and we do everything. We don't, we're in charge when we go out there. And if, we're, so we're accountable. And if you hold people accountable, then a lot of these problems are going to go away. A lot of these other changes, a lot of this stuff is going to go away.
Okay, Mr. Toose has a suggestion.
Sheri, um, just in listening to your comments, um, you, you say your, your, kind of your average is thirty-one. What if we just tweaked that number, uh, between the twenty-five and ten, we say between thirty and ten, and that, that would be the two-fifty range? Do you think that would work for you?
Uh, uh, you know, I just have to sit and look at it. I'd like to look at the numbers of the actual event, the overall amount of money they spend, because that's where that, that's going to come into play.
I just...
If they're doing burgers and hot dogs...
Yeah.
Okay. They can't, I mean, you know, if they're doing shrimp boil, or they're doing big tenderloin, or they're doing something, you know, then, yeah, then, you know, so, I just don't...
I think that gets complicated, Sheri, asking what you're going to cook, and, you know, but, you know...
Well, I understand, I'm just saying, that's where my thinking is.
What about, I love compromise. What if we said a hundred and fifty dollars?
I think I'm...
The thirty to ten?
No, for, it's not a wedding.
Excuse, excuse me, ma'am, you do not have...
Hey, we're just, there again, we're just throwing stuff out and see if it sticks on the wall at this point. You know, um, for non-wedding events of less than thirty people, a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. I think we can leave here with that, and if we need to, you know, after we get away and think about it, we can tweak it.
But there again, we need code enforcement, there again, what comes involved is somebody's going to be sneaky and think, "Well, I'm saying I'm not going to have a wedding," and they do. So that's why we need more code enforcement officers to make sure that everybody's following the rules.
Okay, Betty.
One, one quick question, Sheri, before Betty comes up. You said you had seven events over a hundred.
And those were done at regional beach accesses.
Uh, was there, were there weddings, family things?
Weddings.
Okay.
They were wedding, wedding-related, absolutely.
And a hundred people, that's ten dollars a person.
Yeah.
You know, and so I, I don't really have a problem.
Yeah, no, I don't, I really don't have a...
If you're having a hundred people, then you can raise a thousand dollars.
Absolutely. Uh, I do believe on weddings, on weddings, there is not an issue with that. That's just part of the package.
And, and most of your events are around thirty people.
Yeah, she's talking, I think, if I understand correctly, you're talking about the family that wants to have hot dogs and hamburgers on the beach, and wants you to cater it, or shrimp boil, and, and, you know, we, we don't want to over, I mean, we, we want to be fair. We want to be fair, so, okay, Betty, give us some insight.
Betty, I'm sure, I live right there, I see this every day. We had two weddings Saturday. I mean, we're already starting, and, and let's forget, what's the difference in a wedding and a shrimp boil in the parking lot that's taking up, I see this, like Saturday, if it hadn't have been stormy, we would have had people coming in the afternoon, our citizens coming to want to park and go to the beach. They're taking up parking, and when you're cooking in the parking lot, you're taking up extra space. That's wrong, y'all, and, and it looks bad. This is wrong. I see it every, and then during the week, you know, we, they have signs up that says, "Daytime parking only." There's a group, I think, that comes in, well, I don't think they've started yet, and I don't know for sure what they do, but they come and park at night, I think they have a fire there, and they meet every week. Well, what do you, what is that? I mean, guys, I see this. I see this.
All right, sounds like we're, thank you, sounds like we're set on the weddings, and we need to figure out what we're going to do. Is this about the special events, not weddings?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, and then we're going to move on to the next issue.
As you all have worked, Lori Reichenbach, as you all have worked very hard to weed out the good beach umbrella vendors from the not-so-good beach umbrella vendors, with all due respect to caterers like Sheri, and I have been familiar with her work through the years. This is not a personal slight, but we also have to make sure that the rules apply to caterers from a minimum of ten to a hundred and fifty, just like we're making rules for beach umbrella vendors. And what's fair for Peter is fair for Paul, and not every beach caterer is going to be Sheri. And I think there have to be fees and consequences so that people will follow those rules. And I am going to ask that, as a citizen, you guys look, look at what you're now accomplishing to improve our beach umbrella vending. If we don't just go ahead and hold everybody accountable the same, your beach umbrella people are going to rise up, and the poor caterers are going to still get away with what they have been getting away with already that you're trying to stop. I just ask you to look at it across the board equally.
Thank you.
I think we're going to look at all fees, all fines, aren't we, Brian, for, for every vending industry?
Uh, Mr. Anderson, as Sidney said, all, all fines are, are done by resolution.
Right.
Uh, fees are also set by that same resolution. It's twenty-two sixty-two where all those are contained. So, but, yes, sir, they're, they're all done by resolution, not by code change.
Jeff, can I, I mean, Jeff, I'm sorry, Brian, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a wedding, um, you know, pity the poor man that marries me, but, um, I go down to the beach and I get married.
Yes, ma'am.
Getting married on the beach is one thing. What, I mean, I have to have a permit for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have to have another permit, or there should be something, I'm, I'm having a wedding and I'm also having a reception, they are two different things.
Yes, ma'am.
So do I need two permits, or how, how does that handle? How do we know that they're going to have food?
Once again, there's, there's a few different triggers that require special event permit. Okay? So if you're going to have a wedding, you have to have a special event permit. And in that, within that application, you would also go ahead and list that I'm going to have a reception, here's my list of equipment, here's my number of attendees. Okay? So you would be covered under that one special event permit application.
Okay.
All right? If you were just going to go down and have a reception, your wedding was going to be at a church, uh, if you were going to do something that was normally not allowed by code, uh, so if you want to have lights on the beach, if you want to have food brought to you on the beach, if you had more than fifty people, you would have to pull a special event permit for that. If you were not doing all that, if you were just going to have a group of people assembled down there, and it was less than fifty people, uh, and you were not going to have any, anything else that was not, uh, that, that's prohibited by code, you would not have to have a special event permit.
Well, I think there are two, I mean, I think, um, you know, to have a wedding, you've got a wedding planner. Most people that come from out of state, they've got to have somebody, but then you have a food vendor, you know? Um, should, I guess, my question, should that be two separate permits, or the, are the wedding planner pulled, you know? Because just having a wedding, it's not messing up, but then if you have a wedding and reception...
Yes, ma'am. I think our previous discussion, you, uh, about the number of people at a wedding and having a certain threshold is a good idea. I think we ought to keep the same triggers we have. We have a little discussion coming up about the number of people, so we're going to change that trigger, or discuss changing that trigger. Uh, I think all those are fine. And, uh, you know, the, the, the previous discussion about making special events, uh, that the special event planner, wedding planner, or whatever planner, be a permitted vendor, the reason for that is, is because of the, the requirement by Florida statute that we have to give a notice on first violation. So if we allow just individuals to come do special events, then the probability of them doing more than one event is pretty low. So they would never get a fine, and they would, you know, and what would happen is, is special event people say, "Uh, bride, you need to get the special event permit in your name." But if we tie it to the permitted vendor, then we start having the ability to accumulate recurring noncompliant action and possible revocation of a permit. And I, I believe that until we get to that point, we're going to have a hard time getting people to understand that they have to remain compliant to the, our code.
And, and I think we're moving in, in the right direction. I have a friend whose first name is Cindy, who owns a house at the beach, and she says on more than one occasion, first of all, they use her boardwalk to walk down to the beach on and, and carry their stuff down, and number two, if she tries to go down and use the beach, um, the, the people having the wedding tell her she needs to get off, they're having a wedding. You know, that's, that's not right, you know? So if we have permits and we have fines, uh, or ways of regulating it, then, then I'm fine with it, but we've got to respect our citizens first, our tourists, and, and those that, that live on the beach.
Okay, Brian, could we, I think Sidney...
Yeah, I just need one point of clarification before we move on from this topic. So it's my understanding, the consensus of the board is you would like to see a difference between weddings and other events and the fine structure, and Commissioner Commander suggested for all other events, increasing the fine to one-fifty. Is that other events of a certain size, or just all other events?
Not the fines, the fees.
I'm sorry, the fees. I'm sorry, I misspoke.
You know, looking at, because Sheri was talking between thirty and ten, is it two-fifty for, I guess, for the weddings, for a non-event, for a not a wedding? Um, you know, I'm fine with two hundred, but, you know, I'm trying to compromise here. Brian has his hand...
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, beach code enforcement would recommend, uh, to not delineate between types of events, but to adopt Mr. Toose's idea of changing the number of people. Uh, and exactly for the reason that Commissioner Commander brought up, that, uh, hey, we're, we're just having a reception, oh, we decided to go ahead and get married at the same time.
So you're saying change the, from thirty, thirty to ten, and keep the fifty, fifty, over thirty, five hundred?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. But like I say, you know, don't, don't try to delineate or distinguish between types of events.
That will get, that will get, I'm fine with that.
All right, Sidney, write that up, and then we'll have some more comments, and, you know, this won't be the last. I mean, if we, after we leave here, we think about it, and we think that's too much, we'll come back. Okay, let's move on to six C.
Okay, six C. Limit special events at neighborhood beach accesses based on space available to accommodate special event permit request. This is neighborhood beach accesses that have public beach, public beach associated with them, and the first one is restrict based on quantity of events at specific public beach accesses, or restrict based on quantity of attendees. So, uh, one is, is don't have more events than can be handled there.
Absolutely.
And two is, let's look at the size of these and say, they can accommodate twenty-five people, or they can accommodate fifty people. Uh, very similar to what South Walton Fire District has already done for bonfires.
Okay. Any comments on that?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm running my mouth today. I can, I can at least talk today. Um, we've been dealing with this issue for a long time, way back when, when the weddings started, and the big weddings and, and all that. I mean, I, I've been dealing with this, uh, for over ten years, and I think one of the problems that some of the beach, uh, property people have a problem with is that every Friday, every Saturday, every Sunday, there's something going on right next to their house. The next Friday, the next Saturday, the next Sunday. Um, because, you know, especially if it's weddings, you have the rehearsal on the beach, then Saturday, you know, you have the wedding, or Sunday, you have the wedding. So I think it's important that we look at how many events take place in one particular spot during the season, because if they rent out their houses to people like me who want to go down there and bring my, you know, grandchildren and enjoy the beach, well then how can I enjoy it whenever it's being taken up by a wedding, or it's been taken up by, you know? So, um, I think that maybe there should be some, how many events do we allow at each, especially the neighborhood accesses of, of season? Is that reasonable?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, currently, we, we, we limit beach weddings, one per, one per public beach access.
Per what?
Pardon me?
Per what?
For, for weddings.
For week, month, year?
On, on any given day, there can only be one wedding at a public beach access, and we limit that through the special event permit application. Uh, currently, there is a calendar that's held, uh, as people apply, the calendar's filled up, somebody comes and applies for the same day, we're sorry, you're having a wedding, we already have a wedding there. It doesn't preclude having another special event of some other type there. So what we're asking here is that we be allowed to assess, you know, what can each of these neighborhood beach accesses contain, uh, number-wise, because like Sheri says, uh, you know, some of our special events are ten people. And so at a neighborhood beach access where we have five hundred foot of public beach associated with it, like in our Seagrove areas, uh, there would be, you know, considered that you can handle more than one ten attendee special event. So we would develop a list of what we would think, and we would assess each one on an individual basis.
We've also, in, in that equation, got to keep in mind people that just want to go to the beach and sit in the sand.
Exactly.
You know, we can't, yeah, maybe it can accommodate three events, but then where do the, the people that just want to go to the beach go?
Yes, ma'am. This item, uh, six C, and then item eight A-B, uh, actually give the, uh, application processor more assessing ability to determine, does this beach have adequate capacity to handle a requested special event?
All right, okay.
All right, okay.
Any other comments? Comments from the audience on this one? So, uh, here a consensus that we're going to allow the permitter to this authority?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, moving on to seven.
C one, correct?
Yes, C. We're going to restrict the quali- quantity and the qual- and the, the number of people that attend there and how many are there.
That's right.
And we're going to, I mean, who else could make that call than, you know, than y'all?
Jeff McVeigh, our permit processor.
Thank you very much.
That's good.
Uh, number seven.
Section twenty-two fifty-nine, C two, special event permit application. Item was discussed, tabled in favor, seeing back to committee and/or decision by BCC. Uh, first one, change verbiage for permit requirement based on quantity of people from fifty to thirty. Currently, right now, one of the triggers is if you have fifty or more people, you have to have a special event permit. Doesn't matter what type of event it is. So we're, in this one, we're saying change that trigger point to thirty. Item B, make no change in current verbiage, a special permit required for greater than fifty people. So that's an option. You know, you can do nothing, leave it as fifty, or decide to change it to thirty.
I like thirty. That way we know what's going on, you know?
Thirty.
Okay, thirty would be.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, any comments from the audience on that? Yes, ma'am, Lisa.
It's actually a question.
Lisa Bausch B O U S H Y. I know you've got that down pat already. Um, Brian, I, I heard mentioned, um, that TDC is going to take this function over or has asked to take it over?
We haven't decided, we haven't voted on that yet. We, we are entertaining that idea.
When, when might that happen? I personally think it's a really good idea, by the way, because they do know the situation intimately.
I don't know, I don't know the timetable, but I could get back with you on it.
So there's actually something already that, I mean, will it be on an agenda, do you think?
Oh, absolutely. We'll be on the agenda and have discussion and, yes.
Okay. Well, I, I, just for what it's worth, I'd like to see it sooner than later. And I, I do think they're the best qualified people, not that you all aren't wonderful, but, but, you know, to, to determine what can go on at certain places and they know where beachfront owners have issues or not and that sort of thing. So thank you.
Yes, I think we're going in that direction, but without.
Uh, well, didn't, Brian, didn't you mention earlier that you're going through, uh, construction project over at your building to accommodate?
Yes, sir. Previous discussions with, uh, county admin, uh, we requested that as enforcer of these rules, that we be allowed to be the processor. Beach vending permit was handled, and currently it's handled by Wayne Dyson in the planning department. He has a team that does that. They do a fabulous job at it. We felt that, uh, since we are the enforcement regulation arm that, you know, we actually reviewed most of these anyway, all the beach vending permits and, uh, received multiple requests for clarification on a special event permit application. We just feel that it's better handled. We are more intimately, you know, uh, have knowledge of the individual accesses and how many places they handle.
Thank you.
Maybe in the interim, how long is it going to take to get your building built?
Uh, I feel like that I can have this renovation completed by May first. Uh, you have an item coming up before you, the agenda, uh, on the fourteenth.
Okay, maybe between now and then, that, uh, we can ask Wayne that his department work, I mean, you know, work with you.
Yes, ma'am. We, we work together very closely.
Until we can get it in, but-
Yes, ma'am. We do.
So it sounds like it's a reorganization plan to make, make better services for our constituents, which I think is great.
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
Okay, so, so on this one, I think we agreed on thirty. Let's move down to the next one, eight.
Okay, item eight, section twenty-two fifty-nine, C three, special event permit application. Item was discussed and tabled in favor, seeing back to committee and/or decision by BCC. This section right here is one that adds, uh, some more detail to the permit application so that we can better assess. Item eight, a detailed list of items that are allowed for use on the beach and a list of items that are restricted for use on the beach during special events. This is the list that Commissioner Commander alluded to earlier. Can we develop a list, a, basically a fact sheet of things that are allowed and things that are not allowed? All right, so that would go with the permit application. You pick it up, you automatically get a list and say, okay, uh, oh, they don't allow couches, so I'm not going to put that on my application. They don't allow stoves, I'm not going to put that on there. And so they, they know before they apply what they can do. And so that also gives them the opportunity to say, well, maybe this isn't the best venue for my wedding.
Right.
All right. Item B, add verbiage to permit application, required items to include detailed parking plan. That's what I talked about earlier. Uh, we would assess it for viability. And if there's not a detailed parking plan, a parking plan could include a shuttle, okay? So they would have to secure, if it's at a neighborhood beach access that does not have parking, they could secure a remote parking lot and have a shuttle plan that would get their, uh, attendees in and out, uh, without, you know, bothering the neighbors that live on the road or, or adjacent to the beach access. Uh, item, uh, B two, detailed equipment list and layout to include quantity of tables, chairs, lights, and mistlands, fixtures, and equipments. Once more, it's an opportunity for us to assess, if somebody's going to set up a twenty by sixty tent on raised multi-mountain, we're not going to allow that because there's not enough room to do it. Uh, at inlet beach, you know, we could. And so what will happen with this, this type of, uh, detailed information is, uh, people that want to have a beach, uh, event will, will be steered toward the, the venues that can accommodate them. Our regional beach access, for instance. If you want to have fifty more people, you're probably going to get steered. Sherry does a good job of this already. When people come to, to her, you know, I want to have a beach wedding, I'm going to have fifty people. She goes, oh, well, we got to go to a regional beach access. So this will give us better assessment ability. Item C, add verbiage to include required distance for a special event from any active turtle nest and how a turtle nest that becomes established after a special event permit is issued for a particular public beach access may restrict or prevent that special event from occurring on that particular public beach access. This is to mirror the verbiage that's already in the bonfire section of our, uh, code. And what it basically says is, is that you need to have an understanding that you can't set up within a certain distance of a turtle nest. And you also need to understand that because special event permit applications are sometimes, or special event permits are issued six months in advance of the actual event date, that a turtle nest could become active. That may affect your ability to have this wedding on that particular beach access. Case in point, Van Ness Butler. Currently, the code says bonfires can't be, uh, stationed within two hundred feet. Where's Jeff? Two hundred feet? Bonfire two hundred feet of turtle nest?
Right.
Okay, so we would have, uh, verbiage that mirrors that. Van Ness Butler is ninety feet wide. If a turtle nest appears on Van Ness Butler or within, you're probably close proximity to it, it would limit the ability for this event to continue on. And so the bride, or like I keep saying bride, the special permit, uh, uh, person that wants to have this event needs to know that. Uh, because it will come down to what Commissioner Anderson said. USFWS and FWC are going to crack down on us not protecting turtle nests. All these turtle nests are marked by our current turtle monitoring, uh, subcontractor, South Walton Turtle Watch. They monitor the beach every morning. When a nest becomes established, they mark it with their typical, uh, uh, four by four, uh, or, uh, four by four square and, uh, the, uh, USFWS sign that, that, uh, indicates this is an active turtle nest.
Thank you.
I agree with all three of you.
I do too. Yeah, we're in great-
Comish, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, on eight A, the TDC, um, did not give us a, a detailed list of items that should be prohibited, um, as part of a special event. So I, unless you guys have some ideas of some specific items that you'd like to see prohibited.
Stove?
Okay.
I would like for Brian to get us a list together.
Okay.
Because if we sit here and try to name what we don't want, you know, we'll miss something.
You know, uh, what we can do is, uh, is develop a list that, of items that would traditionally be used at a special event. Tables, chairs.
Music, music.
Music, you know, appropriate sized, uh, music, uh, device. Uh, and, and then, and of course, obvious items that wouldn't be expected to be used there, you know? Uh, I, I don't believe couches are appropriate on the beach.
You know, this is kind of off topic, but we don't allow driving on the beach. So how in Sam Hill did somebody get a stove down there, you know? That took some work.
Labor's, labor's cheap around here and, you know? And unfortunately, there's a price for every activity you want to do.
Yeah.
All right. I believe Sherry wants to speak and then the gentleman next to her also.
I don't think that's a gentleman. I think that's her son. No, oh, okay. Oh, by the way, okay.
Um, this is our typical beach setup. We do not put couches on the beach. We've never, really never been asked to put couches on the beach, but, um, you know, this is our setup. This is our turtle, this is what goes out. Every job we do, we do a layout. This goes with our crew. This one, for example, is if there was a turtle nest in place. We get a reasonable distance. We set our tables up so that nobody has to go around our tables to get near the, uh, so in other words, if you have a bar, you set your bar up, your turtle nest is behind you. There's no reason for anyone to go around you and the bartender stops that. Or the prep cooker, whoever's at that table, okay? Um, the turtle, that, what do you call it? The staying two hundred feet away, that was set by the fire department and I understand that. Um, if we're going to charge somebody a thousand dollars, and keep in mind, I'm going to call today for next year, we're going to charge them a thousand dollars, I can say to them, listen, you have a bonfire, if there's a turtle nest present when we do your event, then we can't do the bonfire. We can do that. But if we say to them, it's a thousand dollars, give me a thousand dollars. Now we have to figure out some kind of backup plan that may cost them another two or three thousand dollars, whatever that may be. If there's a turtle nest and they've sent invitations out, they've done all this, then, then we, we just need to kind of look at that. I think that if Brian gets the layouts and we're a reasonable distance and it's laid out similar, like this, then I think that when he walks out there, I think it, you know, do you think that's reasonable? I mean.
Uh, the two hundred feet might be excessive in the case of a special event. Uh, uh, the two hundred feet established by South Walton Fire District, I think, was, was in collaboration with South Walton Turtle Watch and FWC representatives. There is no, I found no verbiage that lists a specific distance away from a turtle nest for any activity. So, you know, we can go with fifty feet. Uh, it, it just has to be some sort of definitive language so that when we are out there, you know, taking action, that there's not ambiguity in it. Doesn't need to be a reasonable distance. I think twenty-five may be too close. I think fifty feet is appropriate, so.
Well, if you're at, let's just take, for example, if you're at Van Ness.
Yes, ma'am.
Is fifty feet going to be able to get us, so we're not in the vendor? I mean, are we gonna, I, I'm just thinking that we're charging these people a thousand. I'm going to this thousand dollar thing. I'm not worried about the, you know what I'm saying?
We, we already established that, you know, special event permit, as you do things, not allowed by code. So you're not restricted from vendors.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not restricted.
Well, if we go with fifty, I could probably live with that. My concern is FWC and the US, if they come in there, they're going to tag somebody, probably you and me.
Commissioner Chapman, I called them, I talked to them personally. And there is no, they just say, just, they say, we block them off. There's, just don't go where it's blocked off. That's what they told me, both of them.
All right, we, I personally think fifty is too close, um, you know, because we're dealing with people. And unfortunately, people don't, you know, maybe two hundred is too far, but I, you know.
I think if it's set up correctly where that you are actually, the vendor is policing that, that people do not go around them, then I think that that can happen again. You're creating accountability for the vendor.
Yeah.
So, and we do everything. We do all our everything, planning, setting up, you know? We don't, we just try to do it all so we don't have to get into that.
Okay, thank you. I see a hand. Come on up. Black, yes.
We have to remember, we're, we're under the, um, leave no trace ordinance because people broke the rules.
I'm Beth Copege.
Would you spell that, ma'am?
C O P P E D G E. The problem, problem with allowing fifty feet instead of two hundred feet is if a turtle nest is about to hatch and it hatches, it's going to go right to the lights. So if the lights are within fifty feet, the turtles will go right over to the nest. Now, if Turtle Watch is not there monitoring it, which they can't always be, then those turtles are going to go all over the place. They go all over the place of, they see the lights in Panama City, so, I mean,
Sorry, you said-
They have the lights that close, particularly if Sherry says that they do set up lights, then, um, that's a danger. And I would totally recommend the two hundred rule. I mean, two hundred feet to move, if you have a wedding or an event and you need to move it down two hundred because there's a nest, then, I mean, two hundred feet is not much to move it down. We're not asking them to clear the whole beach. We're just saying two hundred feet if there is a nest. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Lisa.
Lisa Bausch B O U S H Y. I don't know if this is conceivable, but perhaps some of the people that put up tur- uh, up lights could consider using some of the turtle friendly light colors. Um, I believe they're amber, red, uh, anyway, they, it's clear. And perhaps that would help a little bit with the lights. And maybe a compromise would be a hundred feet so that it's a little farther away than fifty, but, uh, just a suggestion.
Thank you. All right, Lisa, come on.
Can I ask a question just from my own knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that turtles are affected by light.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they affected by sound in any way?
I'd have to rely on the turtle experts.
Okay. I mean, do they go towards sound? Okay, I'll look it up. That's what internet's for.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So, uh, I don't really have a consensus as to the distance of feet from an active turtle nest, what the board would like to see there.
Well, I'm looking at fifty.
Okay.
And, and the reason for it, whether there's an event there or not, people walk up to those, those nests and they'll stand just outside of it and they'll take pictures. So if we're not going to regulate everybody at fifty, uh, I just, I think it creates a problem.
The, the ultimate enforcement action is by USFWS and FWC. It's what's called a incidental take. And there are fines and penalties for incidental take. So if it's determined that any event or, uh, be it bonfire, special event, or whatever, created an incidental take, they would be subject to fines and penalties by FWC and it's clearly stated in the permit application.
Is the county fined in any way?
To my knowledge, we have not been fined in association with a individual's, uh, incidental take.
Okay. So is that a consensus of fifty?
Well, could, could we put in there too that, you know, fifty feet is kind of close? I, I would suggest that we also put in this that, uh, no bonfires at this, at this special event with a turtle nest close by.
Currently, the bonfire rules, uh, part of the code has two hundred feet. So as, as Sherry mentioned that-
And Sherry, you know, and you, and on your website and things like that, you, you, you guys just need to print this out that, hey, if a turtle nest appears, there will be no bonfire at this event.
Yeah. Once again, as these things are adopted into the code, the different sections, you know, this would be an item that would be specifically listed on the special event permit application. And then they have to acknowledge that they understand all of these items.
Okay, all right, number nine.
Number nine, one we've been looking for. Last one. Twenty-two fifty-four G, regulation of use and conduct on the beach and waterways. Item was discussed, recommendations listed below next to subitem options. Paragraph A, add paragraph prohibiting restricting use of generators on the beach. TDC voted to approve recommendation to BCC, the item restrict based on noise output level, power output, and/or physical size. Once again, this is, would be where we, uh, take a generator that is, uh, deemed acceptable to be used on the beach and, uh, adopt its physical properties for noise output based in, or is, as defined in decibels, power output defined in watts, and then physical size.
Okay, my, my next question is, how do you know if it's eighty-five decibels or a hundred and two? That's what, if you haven't got a monitor or some type of equipment to, to regulate or be able to identify that.
Yes, sir.
How do you determine?
We would require on their permit application that they submit make and model of the generator they would like to use and then we compare that to the ones that are established. So what I've done is I have downloaded information on the most popular quiet generator, the Honda E two thousand, and it has its physical, you know, properties listed. So in the special, special permit application, they want to use a generator, we would say, well, if we come across somebody on the beach that has one, we kind of have an idea of what the output is. We all have computers in our truck. We can easily access product data. And if somebody has a, I'm just going to say Coleman, I don't want to, you know, uh, I make no comments about specific makes, but Coleman fifty-five hundred, uh, very easy to access information about it. We can determine right then and there, uh, what its, uh, decimal output is, what its power output is, and its physical size. We can say, sorry, you didn't meet the, uh, uh, requirements of the code. Depending on how many times we've interacted with you, uh, here's your notice or press hard three copies.
I'll play devil's advocate.
Yes, sir.
It might be well and good that you can get Honda, whatever, and it meets those parameters. You're making an assumption that that vendor is going to maintain that thing, so it'll always be within those tolerances. If they fail to maintain the muffler system, but you go down there or one of the code guys goes down, it's, well, it meets that, but you can hear it three miles down the beach.
That's a good point.
Very much.
Well, I, I would also assume, I'm, I'm looking at Sherry, I'm, I'm picking on her today. Um, you have, you, do you use a generator to make your lights work? Um, you could say yes or no.
Uh, yes, we do.
Instead of batteries?
We use the small, uh, generator that's Brian's talking about. We place it in a container and we take it to the toe of the dune.
Okay.
And that's where it sits. And our lights are the LED low acrylic lights that are turtle friendly.
Okay, so, and, and maybe that should be a requirement. Maybe we should say it, it should be put in a box.
What other uses, who other, I, I know we have some churches that use generators on, on a regular basis. How many, how many beaches? How many, how many beaches do they have church on that, with a generator?
I don't know off the top of my head, I believe they have services at Ed Waling, and I think they have some at Inlet Beach. So, yeah, the uses for a generator, of course, power electric equipment, uh, music devices, uh, announcement devices, lights, uh, or the, the typical items. Most of those items can be powered off a, a smaller generator that's, you know, has a, of acceptable noise output.
Well, then, I don't think we're talking about prohibiting it completely. It's just coming up with one that's got the lower decimal, the wattage, every, those parameters are set. And then, um, it ain't a bad idea, what Sherry's doing is box it, seal it.
Yes, sir.
Something, and maybe if there's any change, it would be to meet those specifications, plus it must be closed.
In a, say, on prohibiting box.
Yes.
Before I get to Mr. Tousis, has had a little clarification of this.
And just real quick, Brian and I have discussed, uh, the possibility of maybe putting some power outlets at the end of the boardwalks, um, as an option to eliminate some of these generators, in some cases, depending on capacity. So, that's something we are looking into, we're just not a hundred percent sure about that at this point, but I just kinda wanna throw out there that we are looking into that as an option, so.
Then I think you would have people that are not getting permits. If you have an outlet there, somebody's gonna use it, you know, that's the only problem. I'm gonna drag my extension cord down there, and I'm gonna.
We do have more beach ambassadors coming on this year, and part of their job will be to, uh, uh, you know, monitor some of our regional beach accesses on a revolving basis. So we hope to be able to, uh, you know, regulate some, uh, behavior at those beach accesses.
And we could also put on a special circuit that we can regulate the control of that circuit, whether it's on or off.
That's a good idea. So, I, I could see where that would hap, that would help, you know, they, they pay for their permit, but they do this on a weekly basis, and, you know, it would make it better for the neighbors that the generator, so.
Definitely a good idea.
Mr. Line.
With the advent of LED lighting, you can do the same thing with no sound whatsoever with a battery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jackie.
Jackie Markel, M.A.R.K.E.L. I just, I haven't been involved in this much, but sitting here and listening today.
Jackie, excuse me, could you speak up just a little? I, I can't hear you good.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, that's better.
I'm just a little concerned that we're turning this place that has been a sanctuary for people to come and get away from the, um, the hustle and bustle of your daily life. You go to the beach, it's quiet, it's tranquil, it's, it nourishes your soul. Now, to hear that you're considering putting outlets at the end of the beach access. You know, I can see people going up there, charging their cell phones. I mean, what are we trying to do with this great place that, that we, you know, that we all moved here? A lot, a lot of us moved here, some people were lucky enough to be born here, some of us had to choose to live here, Mr. Chapman. Anyway, I, I just wanted to say that, just, uh, let's take a timeout there. And the other thing I just wanted to say is, with all due respect to Sherry, like Lori said before, we should not be making policy on perhaps the best example of a, uh, a beach caterer. Because we know that Sherry may be the gold standard, but everybody's not a gold standard. And to, to, when I hear that we're gonna change from two hundred feet, which the fire marshal has, uh, determined was appropriate for a light source, to have a light source from a turtle's nest, to all of a sudden go to fifty feet, where you might have a different kind of light source, that just seems, seems crazy.
Okay. Sammy, you just walked in, let me ask Sammy, if you will, come forward, ma'am, we'll get you here in just a second, back there on the back. Can you, um, address why two hundred feet? Was it because of light, was it because of heat? What was the reason for the two hundred foot?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chapman. Um, when we went to two hundred feet, we met with Turtle Watch.
Okay.
This was been, got back in two thousand ten or eleven, whenever we took over bonfires, and, uh, we spoke with them, and we thought two hundred was appropriate, because they didn't think at that time that a hundred feet, having a bonfire near a nest was far enough. Now, I don't know where they got their numbers from, in, in, in good spirit and good cooperation, we moved it to two hundred feet. Now, I will say, for the record, since we did, since we moved it to two hundred feet, we have not had any turtle deaths, and I'm not trying to make a lot of the joke here, uh, or, or any turtle issues where Turtle Watches come to us and said, hey, the turtles hatched, and they went straight to the bonfire, so, um, we don't have any record of that, they've never approached us. What I can tell you is two hundred has, has seemed to work for us, uh, since, since that's been implemented.
Okay, thank you.
On the back row, come on up.
Hi, my name's Amanda Hampl, H.A.M.P.E.L. Um, I'm counsel for a private Gulffront property owner, and I just wanted to, um, kinda ask a question generally about section twenty-two dash fifty-four G, which is what we're currently talking about. And Ms. Noyes and I had a, um, a brief conversation over the phone about this, and I just wanted to kinda seek clarification if these are specific to private property owners, or just the public beach, beach accesses, and, and.
We're not there yet.
It, you know, whatever that discrepancy is, if it can just be clarified, because.
Sure.
Some folks have had some questions about that.
Uh, so, it's my understanding that all of section twenty-two dash fifty-four applies to all twenty-six miles of the beach.
Okay. All right.
And, and Brian had listed in his recommendations that these be added to twenty-two dash fifty-four G, I think that was probably an error, um, because twenty-two dash fifty-four G just deals with the leave no trace section. So I, I stuck them in twenty-two dash fifty-four, but not necessarily under G.
Okay. Uh, and then, under number nine, nine C, I mean, I know we're not there yet, that one specifically is saying public beach based on size, that's with regard to the tents?
Yes.
So, and that's under section fifty-four G, so.
That's correct. So, um, that in conjunction with our customary use ordinance, tents are prohibited.
That's right.
Public property or private property, however, in the customary use ordinance, there is an exception for a private property owner using a tent on their own property.
Okay, so it'll be made clear once the, okay.
Hopefully.
Thank you so much.
Okay, one more, come on.
Uh, Danny Hornsby, H.O.R.N.S.Y. On the lighting on the beach, is, is it limited to wattage or lumens? Do we have a designation?
Brian, can you, do you know the answer to that? That would be.
No, no, uh, no definition on either one as to what it is. If there is lighting to be, uh, requested to be used on the beach as a special event permit, and it's during turtle season, they also have to have a FDEP permit.
But, that didn't answer the question.
Okay. What's the question?
The, the lumens or the wattage on the lights on the beach?
Correct.
How bright can they be? Can they be lit up like a city, or have we got to have them toned down?
Once again, uh, FDEP would regulate during turtle season.
Right.
Our county code does not have definition of either one, limiting, uh, either one. So during turtle season, we would, we would, uh, rely on FDEP saying how many lights and what wattage you can use.
You know, I don't know that we have any specifications, we have a wildlife lighting ordinance, but it's, uh, it's respected to the residents, the houses.
Which again, it, it.
So, that's basically what, you can go out and have a special event and light up the beach more than somebody that lives on the beach.
Well, well, once again, during turtle season.
And that might be something we need to look at, I appreciate your input.
That was the question, that, that, thank you.
Thank you.
But, what we're talking about mostly here is during turtle season. So there is a, a standard that, that vendors have to go by through the state.
Yes, sir. If they're having it during turtle season, April first, October third, if they have to have a FDEP permit, as part of their.
And it states what the wattage and everything.
You rely on FDEP to, uh, determine what lighting would be allowed during that time of year.
Right, but when you pull a permit for a venue on the beach, if it's during turtle season, they have to go to F.
They, the, right now, our, our current code, uh, section five of land development code, uh, requires that they have a FDEP permit.
Before they come to you for a permit?
That's, exactly.
So that permit should take, that permit should take care of this issue? So we, so we aren't, we're not allowing them to light up more than we allow you to light up?
Right.
Okay.
During turtle season.
Yes, sir.
But I mean, I would like to see a, a limit to, if you're s- sitting in your house, and, I mean, you've got.
I'll research with the FDEP and see how they, uh, make their determination on, uh, issuing a permit.
Right, and if you'll give him your name and phone number, he'll back with you.
He'll, he'll.
Great, thank you.
He's doing a good job.
Thank you.
Because, you know, I, I think, even if it's not turtle season, you know, you have it lit up like a football field, then nobody on the beach can enjoy, you know?
Okay, so you have consensus, we're moving on to. Moving on to B?
Yeah.
Steel-bladed shovels.
Steel-bladed shovels, this came up under twenty-two sixty, uh, we have two exceptions, one is exceptions for authorized personnel, that would be county employees, public safety personnel, as well as exceptions for a specific place per- permitted vendor personnel. Uh, both cases, TDC voted to approve for recommendation to BCC. What this is, is an attempt to limit holes on the beach. Uh, so we feel like that we can limit the hole digging apparatus, we can help, you know, eliminate the holes. There is no ordinance against holes, or even leaving a hole on a beach.
Well, they sure need to, they're just not safe.
They're not safe, I say for people or turtles, or our guys traversing the beach at night.
So, any objections to these two? Sounds like we're in consensus.
Apparently I'm lost, what numbers?
I'm sorry, we're on nine B.
Nine B is.
And it carries over onto the next page.
Prohibit steel-bladed shovels.
I don't understand.
I, I, our experience on the beach is, is that the, the bigger, that the bigger holes we find are usually dug with a, a regular-sized spade.
A shovel, shovel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Steel-bladed shovel. Uh, we don't wanna limit, you know, young kids from making sand castles with plastic shovels and buckets and all that. But, and, and, we're also working on a better education, uh, signage and system to let people know that holes aren't good. What happens is they come down, they dig big holes, on the west end of the beach, we found that something was very popular, is what's called, I call it a sand couch, where they dig a big hole, and they put a seat in it, and they have a table in the middle, and, sitting around on a lazy boy. They don't fill them in when they go home that evening. And we actually had to take our, uh, bobcat, uh, skid steer down there a couple of times last year to fill in these holes. And so, in all cases, they had steel-bladed shovels.
Well, if I was gonna put up a six-by-six-by-six tent, how do I, what do I dig the hole with?
Job be a hole in the ground.
Gonna be a hole, what do I dig the hole with?
Well, what?
Or do I?
You don't, you, you don't.
I'm sorry, I, you know, I'm.
The actual, uh, technique is, uh, what's called a sandbag, and they, a lot of those tents now come with small bags that you can put sand in and tie to your tent, uh, pole base.
Okay, I just wondered, I haven't known. My mama said, if you don't ask, you don't know.
That's right.
Okay, do we have any, uh, comments from the audience on the shovels? Sounds like we're in consensus, moving on to C.
C, okay, this is the, uh, item addressing tents. Uh, this was also mirrored under twenty-two sixty, and it is verbiage restricting the, uh, use of tents on public beach based on size. Uh, as you can see in parentheses, uh, there are some other restrictions that are contained in chapter twenty-three customary use, which has not gone into effect yet. But, uh, TDC voted to approve recommendation, a tent no bigger six, than six-by-six-by-six.
I agree.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. Any comments from the audience? We're in consensus, moving on.
And, and to be clear, this is on public beaches?
Yes.
Public beaches, all right, D.
Uh, this is, uh, add, uh, verbiage to allow for a clear corridor at the toe of the dune. Once again, this was in twenty-two sixty for vendors, so we felt it's appropriate under twenty-two fifty-four, uh, general use of the beach. This is a clear zone, uh, toe of the dune, to allow emergency personnel to traverse east and west along the beach. TDC recommended, uh, fifteen feet.
All right, keep it, all right, keep it consistent with the, the other one.
Yeah. And as you guys remember, in the customary use ordinance on private property, there's the fifteen-foot buffer as well.
Are we in consensus, yes? Any comments from the audience? Ms., Lisa?
B.O.U.S.H.Y. I just wanna reiterate that I'm really concerned about having only a fifteen-foot buffer with our, you know, our compromised dunes that, that occur, and, um, you know, there's a tendency, understandably, that if there's fifteen feet, people wanna drive right in the middle of it. So that really puts, you know, a seven-foot wide vehicle, uh, much closer to the dune than, than what you might think of as fifteen feet. So, if you consider twenty-five, um, and obviously, if there's not twenty-five feet, we got a real situation there, and the less driving there is, the better. But the farther away it can be from the dune, the better. It also helps protect, uh, turtle nest that may be during, particularly during laying season, you know, they're, really, all they have to rely on are tracks. And sometimes our folks are out fairly early in the morning, or fairly late at night, when the lighting is not real good. And so the farther they tend to be away from the dunes, the less likely they're gonna run over turtle nest, although, as we know, they sometimes only come in thirty or forty feet and stop, you know, but, thank you, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, Betty.
Betty Luttrell, when I came up last week and this came up, I did ask for the fires to be twenty-five, can we ask Sammy what he thinks? That's where I live, uh, it's awfully close, we, you know, it's, it, I don't know if y'all know what the park looks like at Inlet Beach, but I sit there a lot of times very scared where my house is, that it could catch on fire. And so, um, I'd like to, I mean, if Sammy thinks fifteen, that's safe, that's fine, uh, and I'm not overdispleting you, but I just, it's, it's scary at times, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
All right, Sammy, she put you on the spot, son.
He can handle the fire.
We'll show you the back door.
We are talking about access, correct?
We're talking about the emergency vehicles on the beach. Do, do y'all ever, y'all don't ever go?
Yes, ma'am, we do, with our beach, uh, lifeguard program, so, what I can tell you is, in emergency access, well, the way the fire code reads for any street is twenty feet. That, that's the code that we apply, and on occasion, we'll use fifteen feet if the traffic is one-way. But now, when I know we're talking about beach access, um, we would be comfortable with twenty. Obviously, the more, the better. These guys have to tow a truck, and sometimes they have to carry a jet ski, and, uh, imagine July fourth, beach is crowded, obviously, the more space for us to access the beach would be better, but, uh, if you're going strictly on fire code, just how I would apply this, I would say twenty feet.
It sounds, I mean, I, I'm fine with twenty feet. I think that's, it's a compromise.
That would be no different than if you were.
Customary use, too, wouldn't it?
Um, it's, uh, we could change our customary, and as you guys know, we have the customary use ordinance, so there may very well be changes that they bring to you guys, that you guys want to adopt.
And if we need to amend this later to reflect what's in the customary use ordinance, we'll have time to do that.
I'd say just twenty.
It's completely up to you guys.
Sammy made a, a point, Fourth of July weekend, beaches are full.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna take up this fifteen-foot, or twenty-foot, whatever it is.
Absolutely.
And then, somebody's gotta move them, I guess they'd move if they seen the fire truck, or share us off.
We would hope so.
But I, I tell you what, they did not, years ago, we had a, a, uh, ship that dumped a bunch of medical waste, needles.
Yes, sir, I remember that.
Remember it?
Yes, sir.
We could hardly get down on the beach, nobody even moved, it had every light in the world on, they just weren't gonna move. We end up paying for a camera I ran over, but anyway. But anyway, um, okay, it, whatever y'all wanna do, I don't care, but, um, we gotta be able to. We gotta make sure that we can enforce movement if somebody's encroached upon that in the, in the event of emergency.
Put a cattle prod in front of your truck, that probably would work. Betty, come on up, you might give us, have more insight.
If we can put them on it, we probably would.
I don't mean to take up so much time, what I meant was a fire from the, you know, where right now, you're saying that from the, the toe of the dune, you only have to be fifteen feet out to have a fire. That's what I meant, not the emergency.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I thought we were talking about access.
Yeah, I was just saying, if we could move it out a little further, so that if any of the sparks come up, and they get up in the underground, it can start.
We're talking about emergency maintain, emergency vehicles on the beach, as far as what kind of access.
Okay, but what I had asked, and I think that's...
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Slow, but founded, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, and I guess as far as distance of a bonfire from a structure, that's something you guys can handle in the permitting process.
It is, and it's in our brochure, and I believe it's fifty foot from anything combustible. I mean, I'll have to double check, and fortunately, Mr. Tusa has a bonfire brochure there, in his hand, so he could probably tell us, because it's pretty specific. It may even be a hundred feet from vegetation.
But that's something that would be handled on the permitting end, rather than a change in the ordinance?
Yes.
Well, then, I'll go back to fifteen, if it will mirror the customary use.
And that's why, I think the, when we were hearing this on the TDC board, I think that's why we decided on fifteen, because it mirrored...
And I would hope, you know, in a real world, that people use discretion, and no, don't go up near the sand dunes if you have a way that you don't have to, I mean, that's common sense. So I would hope directors would tell their people that.
This actually says one hundred feet away from habitable structures, two hundred feet away from turtle nest, and fifty feet away from vehicles, public roads, other structures, plants, and vegetation.
Got it.
Great, so...
I figured it, because I wrote it.
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, we're down to E.
You might want to stay close, Sammy, just, you know.
Item E, add verbiage to establish minimum distance, beach equipment is allowed next to the water's edge. Currently, the code says an ambiguous reasonable distance. We ask that a defined distance be, TDC recommended fifteen feet. So this would be how close you can set your equipment to the water's edge.
And just to remind you guys of our discussion about the vendors, so for the vendors, you guys asked that we set a fifteen foot buffer at the toe of the dune, however, for vendors on private property, that they're not subject to the fifteen feet from the water's edge. So you guys may want to consider doing that, have this fifteen foot designation only be on public property.
And define, there again, define equipment for me. Are we talking beach chairs and umbrellas? Are we talking tables, because we're doing catering?
Beach equipment be defined as, you know, static equipment, chairs, umbrellas, tents less than six by six.
Okay, tables?
Somebody in it, well, yes, ma'am, table would be, I guess.
See, I mean, I think we need to be clear and defined.
I agree.
Spell it all out, you know?
Commissioner Commander, we did have a definition of beach equipment in the ordinance previously before we drafted the changes back in June of last year, so we could just add that back in.
I think that would be good, I mean, you know, you need, because somebody's going to look at it and say, well, you didn't say I couldn't have a so-and-so, you know, got to be clear.
So to make it consistent with our other decision, it would be neighborhood and regional accesses?
Yes.
Public accesses.
Fifteen feet.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
All right, that concludes now, yeah, we want comments on this, and then I'm going to let anybody that has a comment that we haven't specifically talked about, I'm going to let you speak. But right here, the lady, Jackie, or come on, and then Jackie, after you.
Thank you, Georgine Newell, N-E-W-E-L-L. On this last one, totally agree, but my question is, how are we going to be proactive about informing the public that in all of this nine, rules have changed? Six foot by six foot by six foot tents aren't readily available at Walmart? And if they bring them from home, you know, are we going to work with maybe, you know, the rental agencies and that sort of thing to get the word out? So I'd just like to know, I mean, I know we have the ambassadors and everything, and I know with time, it'll all become norm, but a little proactive plan might be a good thing to do.
Thank you, thanks for that. Jackie?
And I know Jay's already thought of this, but I think every TDC vendor, renter, needs to have these rules in every house, in every packet. When I go, when I go to check in to pay my money, you know, I'm given stuff about turtle watch and that sort of thing, they should be included. And I don't know how we get the ones who don't rent through the TDC, but there again, our website comes up, you know...
Yes, ma'am, that is the plan, and some bed tax collectors are great partners, and they work with us to disseminate that information, and then some, not so much so, but it is definitely something that we'll work on.
Go ahead.
Jackie Markell, just a point of clarification, the fifteen foot from the water's edge, so does that mean that a mom with her little baby can't put her chair at the water's edge when the baby's running in the water?
As suggested, yes, I mean, that would...
It does mean that?
Yeah, that would be prohibited if we adopt this change.
That's crazy. That's crazy. And just one other question I want to ask, just as a point of information, there was discussion during this meeting about cooking, cooking in the parking lots, is that allowed?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, is that patrolled?
That's an enforcement issue, that we'll deal with.
Okay, thanks.
Now, and on this, I, I know the point we were trying to get, we were trying to eliminate the vendors from chairs and umbrellas, I never would, I mean, now, that's what we've done, we're going to fix that, because a child and their mother needs to be, or, you know, I don't, I know the purpose of this, but so, maybe we do need to spell it out a little bit differently.
Yeah, the purpose was, is to help the belly in up to the water, and making it hard to traverse east and west along the water's edge. So the problem we have is the race of the water's edge, everybody wants to be there, and how do you allow somebody to get close enough without leaving enough room for somebody to get in front of them? Okay, so if you're sitting there in your equipment, most people won't sit up in front of you with another chair, and if you do want to come down and sit next to the water's edge, you need to sit on the towel and watch it. But, you know, all these problems are congestion on the beach, and it's no longer, everybody can get waterfront. Some people have to sit second, third, fourth tier on the beach. So a lot of these language changes were to aid that, that change in how the beach is used.
To make it, make sure that we have that area that they can traverse on the wet, I mean, on the wet sand, without obstruction.
Yes, ma'am, without walking through the water. Because right now, if you're walking down the beach, you're walking in the water.
Right.
And so, you know...
Okay, so, so do you feel like we spell that out clearly? Because, I mean, if Jackie's having questions, I've, you know...
Well, obviously, I guess it's an issue, you know, TDC has discretion as far as issues like that.
Yeah, we use good discretion on how, you, once again, our job, we feel like, is to make the beach a better place for everybody. We're not down there trying to generate revenue through citations, or make people have a bad visit. We're just trying to accommodate all the visitors to the beach.
We want everybody to have a good experience.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, now we'll conclude, but if you have, want to say something, and we didn't talk about it today, if you would raise your hand, then you can come up and...
One thing before I'm done, is I appreciate your time and consideration for all this. We do feel like it'll help us do our job better, and in turn, make it better for all concern. I know it's been laborious and sometimes tedious, but appreciate your consideration for it and taking it on.
That's called, that's called growing pains.
Let's give the people, okay, so we have, we have come up with these changes, Sidney.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we've come up with these changes.
Yes, ma'am.
When are you going to bring it back? Now, I mean, I think, there again, we have chewed on this ad nauseam, we need to get this passed.
Yes, ma'am, so we advertised to hold a special meeting on February the seventh, so that's, yes, ma'am, a public hearing to adopt the ordinance. So I will draft up the changes based on your comments at this workshop and the previous workshop, and hopefully, I'll have that to you guys, I would hope, on Monday. And then I'll go around to each of you next week.
This Monday?
Yes, ma'am, I mean, I know you guys are going to be busy on Monday, I am too. So hopefully, on Tuesday or later, we can all sit down individually and go through it before the public hearing on the seventh.
All right, good, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Question on your meeting on the seventh, so that's for any public comment, it'll be...
On the ordinance.
On the ordinance, as you write it.
Yes.
Based on the inclination of what everybody thinks the last two meetings have proven out on all nine items.
Yes.
And then, once the public information is gathered, then, is there a decision by the board?
So a decision, if the board chooses, a decision will be made on February the seventh, that's when the changes will be enacted, if the board wishes.
But if there, so the decision point is February seventh?
Yes, ma'am.
After public?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, sir, right here.
Just a comment on the overall thing, is I think Brian is doing a good job of trying to get both sides to work together. I don't always agree with him, but I think he's working hard at it.
Yes, I agree, Brian and the staff, and Mr. Tusa's doing a wonderful job, I agree.
Right, they are, they're trying.
Thank you. They are, and we're trying, believe it or not, we're trying.
No, no, it didn't mean...
No, I know. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Anybody would like to substitute, be commissioner for one day? This has actually been an enjoyable meeting for me.
Talking about the toe of the dune storage, now, we're talking about changing the ordinance about the chairs at the toe of the dune still?
We left it as is.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Destin Holland, H-O-L-L-A-N-D, I'm with Rent Gear Here, thank you for your time, commissioners. Just a quick question...
I'm sorry, you said that too fast, you're with what?
With Rent Gear Here.
Okay.
On the fifteen foot rule on, at the toe of the dune, as well as at the water's edge, we want to help with that. Just a question, that I know things are going to come up during the season, it's a long season, we have storms that come in throughout the year, and so my question is, you know, I'll watch the weather at night, you know, I've got to see what the weather's doing before I go to bed, I wake up, I've got to get our guys going by five thirty AM, so we have to know what the weather's doing. So there's going to be days when you walk down to X access, and the whole sand is wet. And so you kind of have an idea, the high tide doesn't really give you a definitive answer on certain days. So, you know, you say, oh, well, high tide's at eleven fifteen AM today. There's just going to be days where it's not definitive, and obviously, we've had guests that have rented chairs from us, so we want to set them up. And then in addition, there are certain areas, you know, on our Walton County beaches, that when you take fifteen and fifteen feet, and you add them together, and you got thirty feet, I mean, all of a sudden, you're like, there's not enough left. I agree that we're making strides with the rules. I just want to know, you know, where does that stand? Because obviously, we want to be able to provide services for guests in both of those situations.
Brian, you want to address that, and we're trying to take out, you know, the gray area, but it all boils back down to common sense, and I wouldn't think that you would ever be written up a ticket, written a ticket if you're, you know, unintentional. Now, if you're intentionally going down there every day, and you're setting up too far, then yes, somebody needs a ticket, but you, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but go ahead.
No, you're exactly...
Could I add one thing, Commissioner? And I think it should be you as the vendor, you know, make, rather than the kids, because I know y'all rent, you know, y'all use high school kids or college kids, I think it should be your responsibility to judge, because you're going to be held accountable.
You're exactly right in your assumption. We use offshore discretion in all the activity we do, and Mr. Holland is exactly correct. There are places on the beach where there's simply not enough room. If there's not enough room, you just can't do it. I mean, I don't know how to answer that question. I do know how to answer it, I just did, you can't, you can't do it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Would you like me coming up, can I just...
No, you got to come up. We just got to have your recorded.
We've got to record your lovely voice, sorry.
That's okay, no, no, apologize.
I just wanted to thank the new TDC director and Brian, they've always been very helpful every time I call. I'm sure Brian's like, oh, what does she want now? But I've known him since he was a little kid, we both lived in Dothan, and very accommodating when I called, came out, looked at our area, and I appreciate all y'all for listening to this, because we do want to, and I don't want to be the bad, bad one, I just want things done the right way, so everybody enjoys it. And that my husband keeps saying, I want to move, I want to move to the bay, I don't want to move, so I'm working hard.
We've got bay issues over there, too, because I was one of them. All right, this is adjourned, thank, well, oh, I'm sorry, I thought everybody was finished. Come on, oh, Mr. Mansell, you've been here for a long time, yes, we want to hear you.
Mansell White, Seagrove Beach, I just wanted a clarification on, and it may not be appropriate at this time to ask, but on item number four, which I believe was discussed at the previous workshop, can I ask for a clarification on something with item number four? Is that appropriate for me to ask?
Yes, absolutely, that's what we're here for.
Okay, so that, the Roman numeral I, talking about the Upland property owners, the recommendation,